Thank you for enduring, for spending their patience and the opportunity to speak. I addressed you folks, some of you at the legislature meeting in the fall.
What was your name again?
It's Don Hughes. So first, I want to read the statement from Mark Donley, the executive director of OCPRA regarding Site 31. "OCPRA does not have plans or desire to develop a permitted landfill at this time because, even without a potential partnership with Cortland County, there is sufficient landfill capacity in the state for reuse of the material, that being ash, as an alternative daily cover." So, "OCPRA does not intend to develop Site 31. If they ever do, I'll come back and help you fight it. My word. I'm a professional engineer, environmental expert, PhD in environmental chemistry." This plan, this Ash for Trash deal, is a travesty. There is no justification. As Ms. King from Cortland so eloquently pointed out, the economics are tenuous at best for Cortland, and they are extremely poor for Anandaga County as well. Incineration is the most expensive way to get rid of trash. Let me recite some numbers here. Average tip fee for recycling, well, the average tip fee for recycling is about zero because you get paid. Composting can be $44 a ton, that's about what OCPRA is spending. There's a local composter who does it for about $5,000 a ton. Average tip fee for a landfill nationally is $61. You can landfill for about $35 here. Average tip fee for an incinerator, $92. If we follow through with this agreement, if the legislature allows Cortland to ship this trash here and soon to be followed by other communities, I guarantee, because we'll need to fill the capacity, we will be chaining ourselves to this thing for another 20 years, and we will be paying some of the highest tipping fees of anywhere in upstate New York. Don't do it. Just for that reason alone, cost, this is very expensive. We have far greater opportunities to reduce our costs by reducing our waste first, by increasing composting, by capturing more of the recyclables, by developing markets, specialty markets, such as Neil Seltman talked about, bringing in manufacturing, remanufactures who will take old mattresses, deconstruct them, and turn them into new ones, just an example. And they'll be happy to set up shop here. One issue I wanted to highlight that other people have not talked about in a lot of discussion today, but transport of ash, what we're looking at in terms of trucks on the road, 24 up to, well, the plan says 12 to 24 trucks per day would be traversing Interstate 81. So bringing trash down 40 miles and bringing ash up 40 miles. That's the increase in truck traffic, increase in fumes, increase in air pollution, and God forbid, there's an accident. And you know what that road is like during the winter. I used to commute to Cortland, and there were many, many truck accidents. That in itself is the reason we give pause. The DEIS is flawed, highly flawed, because it doesn't look at the whole picture. It says... "The Anandaga County Waste Standards Facility has previously undergone a full environmental review prior to the permitting, construction, and operation of the facility." Oh yeah. "This lengthy process began with the issuance of a draft environmental impact statement in February 1981," when they were considering 1,400 tons per day, "and it was then supplemented in 1988 for the construction and operation of the current facility." 1988 is a while back. The DEIS goes on to say, "Well, the following topics were satisfactorily addressed in this prior process and will not be reconsidered," because we won't be processing more than the current permitted capacity. It goes through a whole laundry list of stuff, including traffic, land use, zoning, community services, health and safety, noise, economics, overs, energy. Well, I have to tell you, a few things have changed since 1988. It was when we were using floppy disks. So, I urge you to reject this deal. Bottom line is we need to take a comprehensive look at solid waste. Step back, let's do a real solid waste management plan, a supplemental one, a real one, that really looks at all the issues. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our final speaker for the night is Michael Wolfson.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Michael Wolfson. I'm a physician, a medical doctor, a scientist. My training was here at Upstate, and following that, I finished a fellowship at Harvard in occupational environmental medicine, and that's been my primary practice for the last 20 years. Now, everyone's entitled to his or her opinions, but not everyone is not entitled to it. It's their own facts. And as Don just pointed out, the last review health risk assessment was done based on data that's almost 30 years old. That data is absolutely worthless at this point in time. As I pointed out, I'm going to supplement some of the comments I made in November and at multiple prior meetings that have gone on for the last 15 or 20 years, and add a few new things that I think that people should hear. This is a cancer factor. That's what this incinerator is. When the original health risk assessment was completed in the early '90s, before I returned to Syracuse, which is where I grew up, in 1992, prior to that, the health risk assessment that was done, and it was paid for by the, I believe, the incinerator operator, if I'm not incorrect, that's what I recall, the health risk assessment determined that 9.9 people per million would die of cancer. That's excess cancers, or, I'm sorry, not die, would develop cancer, excess cancers per million population. So, we're not exactly at the five, approximately five, per year, extra cancers based on the emissions from the incinerator. I'm not certain. I'd have to go back to the 30-year-old document to see whether they even considered the other issues, which are the fact that your soil, for those of you who are downwind of the incinerator, is being contaminated, which means that according to EPA standards, at least a quarter, 25% of the carcinogens that are put out by the incinerator and found in the soil, and you can find the test results on the Anandaga County Health Department website, at least a quarter of those cancer-causing agents are in your house, in your household dust, where your children crawl around on the floor, where they engage in hand-to-mouth activity, putting their toys in their mouths. And as adults, you actually ingest about half the amount of dirt and dust in your house and around your house that the children do. So, any of you who are downwind, any of you who are downwind in any direction from the incinerator, it's primarily the Jamesville area or the 13078 zip code, you're all exposed to those cancer-causing agents that come from the incinerator. So what are they? Dioxins, that's the, considered to be the most toxic substance that's produced by human activity. Dibenzoacerenes, PCBs and dioxin-like PCBs, arsenic, cadmium, lead, which is now considered a cancer-causing agent, which it wasn't at the time that the original health risk assessment was done. Cadmium, and there are others. So the bottom line is, and it was expected that there would be almost 10 extra cancers per million in 1994 when the incinerator opened. Now, interestingly, if the DEC had numbers from this consultant that said there would be 10 extra cancers per million, and the old number that the EPA used to use for an acceptable risk was one extra cancer per million population, so that means one family, one person, one family would have to suffer through that. But the consultant said, "No, there are going to be 9.9." It's a convenient number, because if it had been 10, the permit would not have been allowed. The DEC would have been required by law not to permit the incinerator. Now, what we know now is that dioxins are at least 1,000 times more toxic than they were considered to be at the time of the original health risk assessment. And yet, I've been submitting documents to the DEC, to the county health department, the state health department, for over 15 years, all of which have been ignored, including the most recent ones. For the scoping period here, I've not received one response, and each time that the DEC has re-permitted this incinerator is ignored, as has the state health department, it is ignored in medical and scientific information that I provide, and indicating that at the very least, what's needed is a new health risk assessment. And the legislature must take the responsibility, the demand that a new health risk assessment be done. When this incinerator was originally proposed, the legislature at that time guaranteed, made an ironclad guarantee, that would be no importation of trash from anywhere. When the DEC and the incinerator out in OCPRA tried to pull a fast one on us and wanted a temporary permit to burn tires about 15 years ago, five to 10 times as many people as in this meeting showed up in Jamesville, and 99 out of 100 of those people, including myself, spoke against it. Interestingly, they pulled the permit request a week later. Now, what it's going to take is for the populations of Cortland and Anandaga County to make it clear to this legislature and to the legislature in Cortland County that this is an unacceptable means of getting rid of trash. You should know that none of these cancer-causing agents are present in trash that's being landfilled, with a few minor exceptions. If people throw a battery with lead in it into their trash and it gets missed, yeah, that'll be in a landfill. But none of the things, none of the cancer-causing agents that are found downwind of this incinerator, and you can look online, and you can find this, go to the library, use your own computer, you can find the levels, in multiple instances, they exceed what is the EPA acceptable level for these cancer-causing agents in soil. And of course, the county health department has declined now to test other things. They won't test water, they won't test food, they won't test vegetation. So, they've basically cut back on the off-site monitoring program to where we only know soil levels. The soil levels alone are dangerous. The bottom line is that this incinerator takes in, and this is a lie that has been on TV, in ads, in my opinion, it's a straight-out lie, and if OCPRA were governed by FCC regulations, they would be responsible for possibly civil and criminal penalties. Their ads on TV say, "We're taking 325,000 tons of trash, and we're getting rid of it. We're taking it out of the waste stream." Well, even the head of OCPRA admitted to me in a November meeting or October meeting, when the board limited our comments to a couple of minutes, to three minutes, admitted directly that at least 25% of what's burned in that incinerator comes out as ash. Now, that ash is not non-toxic, as the totally incorrect article in the post-standard states today. That is hazardous waste. Hazardous waste is defined by the federal government, by the EPA, even the EPA, which is colluded with, as far as I'm concerned, the DEC and the state health department, to basically cover this stuff up, because they knew about our comments, they knew about the medical risks, they knew about the lack of a modern health risk assessment beyond 1980s, and yet they've done nothing. Now, the EPA says that you can't landfill ash if it's hazardous waste. And what's the definition? Any ash that contains dioxins is hazardous waste. Any ash that contains any cancer-causing agent is hazardous waste. When what's called the TCLP, you don't need to know the details, but it's called the Toxic Characteristic Leaching Procedure, which is the sham test that's done on the ash to determine supposedly that it's not hazardous. When that ash is put in a column and waters run through it to determine what comes out the other end, the EPA says you have to test the 39 constituents. If any of the 39 exceed the EPA standard, it's hazardous waste. If you know that what's in that ash has a carcinogen in it, it's hazardous waste. So, you got in your newspapers, I believe I received it in my newspaper recently, an OCPRA publication that said, "We did a TCLP test, we got cadmium and lead, and it's within the acceptable levels set by the EPA." Well, that's not possible, because cadmium and lead are carcinogens, and if you get a cancer-causing agent or carcinogen in your TCLP test, it's hazardous waste. Now, I'm not an attorney, but I've looked at the 337-page law that governs this, among others, the 2008, 2012 versions, and we've been landfilling hazardous waste in Seneca Meadows and wherever else they're dumping the ash now, since the incinerator opened. Now, whether or not some agency has improperly given a pass to OCPRA and the incinerator to dump this hazardous waste in an unregulated landfill is beyond my knowledge at this point. I will find out. The bottom line is, this ash is hazardous waste, and it shouldn't be dumped in Cortland, it shouldn't be dumped in Seneca Meadows. We should shut this incinerator down. The DEC and the health department have been afraid to answer my questions, my medical and scientific criticisms, each time this has come up for a permit. The permit for this incinerator is supposed to be renewed every five years. Opened in 1994, should have been re-permitted in 99, 2004, 2009, and then this would be the fourth re-permitting. It's been re-permitted twice, because our comments, as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion, frighten them, and they couldn't answer them. So they just let the incinerator operate without an updated permit for four years on two different occasions. Bottom line is, I disagree with the previous, one of the previous speakers, and in my opinion, you can't trust the DEC, you can't trust the county health department, you can't trust the state health department. When we found that the county health department was, in my opinion, falsifying data from the off-site monitoring program, we confronted the health commissioner, the local head of the DEC, the New York State Albany head of the Toxics Bureau of the Department of Health, several other people from the DEC and the Department of Health in Albany, in the health commissioner's office in Syracuse. There were several people in this room who were at that meeting. When I told them that they had been sending improper information to the state department of health, that the testing for the first six years was improper, there were no answers. They basically stonewalled. They said nothing, they did nothing. They knew that they had been violating regulations, but they did nothing. The bottom line is that this has been a sham since the beginning. This facility is a cancer factory. We have data now that shows increased levels of breast cancer, downwind from the incinerator. I would say that, in my opinion, without having even further documentation, it's highly likely that at least some of those increased cases of breast cancer are due to the incinerator emissions. Now, we're also talking about other types of cancers. Prostate cancer, possibly thyroid cancer, this clearly, if you go online, any of you who are interested in looking at Vietnam veterans in Agent Orange, it's a publication that comes out every two years from National Academy of Sciences. Even that document, which is extremely conservative, and is usually 10 or 15 years behind the medical literature, says multiple types of leukemias, lymphomas, soft tissue sarcomas, chloroacne, diabetes, and now thyroid disease. And I believe there's literature out there that shows that thyroid cancer is also one of the results of exposure. So we're talking about a cancer factor. This should be shut down if anybody had the guts to do a new health risk assessment, which was not done in the new draft environmental statement, was not done, and you're certainly camping a lion data from 30 years ago. It would be a joke if it weren't so pathetic. The bottom line is, a new health risk assessment has to be done, has to be done by an independent group that has no relationship to the operators of the incinerator, to OCPRA, or even to the legislature. Has to be an independent group that does a new health risk assessment, and I am of the belief that if a new health risk assessment were done, this incinerator would have to be shut down as soon as those results were found. We would have to decommission the incinerator. There is no safe way to run this facility. And I suggest that you go on, you go and you look at this literature for yourself. You don't have to be a doctor, an MD, or a scientist to understand the dangers here. You don't have to have a fellowship from Harvard, as I do, you don't have to have taught at Brown, Yale, and Upstate. You don't have to have done any of that. All you have to do is read the information for yourself and decide whether you want to have a cancer factory in our county that's engaging the health and the environment, public health and environment. So again, I thank you for the extra time.
Next we have Pam Jenkins, followed by Dick Clark, followed by Allison King.
Good evening. My name is Pam Jenkins, and I live in Cortland County. A number of us in Cortland County have been studying the Ash for Trash proposal for a year and a half, and agreement in principle to pursue the Ash for Trash project was signed between Anandaga County, OCPRA, and Cortland County. This agreement was signed before it was ever discussed in public, and secret negotiations with OCPRA and Anandaga County continue to this day. This is beyond an abuse of the open government requirements. It's scandalous. Most of the 50 pages of my comments and questions have been electronically submitted to accompany this testimony. Last night, we had our DEIS public hearing in Cortland. We're a small county, 50,000 people, we have more cows than people in our county, but 70 people showed up, 20 people spoke, all of them were in opposition to Ash for Trash. Not one person spoke in favor of it. Next issue, there can absolutely be no excuse for not requiring complete health impact assessments per federal CDC protocols be done in each county. Your last one was, what, I don't know, 30 years ago? Okay, you can't rely on information from 30 years ago. We've learned a lot in 30 years. We've learned extremely much about how dangerous those emissions are. The Cortland County Health Department recommended that a health impact assessment be done for Cortland County. This recommendation was ignored in the DEIS. Current medical knowledge recognizes that incinerator emissions and incinerator ash contain disease-causing toxins. We want to know how many excess cancers and other diseases are expected to be caused by continued operation of the incinerator and the projected ash dump. The OCPRA incinerator uses old technology, creates dioxins, acid, vaporized medicines, metals, and releases the most hazardous, PM 2.5 and .5. No one in this room can deny that. OCPRA does not control for PM 2.5 or 5. No one can say, in this room, can say that they do. Those air emissions float around in every direction, they precipitate it out onto fields, into water, into people's gardens, and they fall on school yards, too. The four-mile impact contains very many public schools. We pointed out in the scope and the final scope and the DEIS that they were each grossly lacking, and they were not even compliant with secret laws. Financial and budget details have been concealed. Secret law says these must be in the DEIS, and they are absent. Secret law says that there must be a discussion of catastrophic consequences, but they're absent in the DEIS. The DEIS failed to discuss that the closest DEC critical environmental area is just downhill from the Cortland landfill. This is McGraw's watershed, it's their public water supply. Several creeks that drain the landfill run right past McGraw's public water supply to join the Tyahney Yoga and flow to the Chesapeake Bay. Most of our written and spoken questions and comments have not been addressed. They do not appear in the DEIS. The information requested is absent. Open meeting law continues to be violated by secret meetings and denials for the information, which is our right to access. Our FOIL requests are denied. The Committee on Open Government issued an advisory decision that did not agree with Cortland's withholding of the information that we requested, and I can forward that to any of you if you request it. There is no basis upon which we can see how your decisions are being made. We see that most of the DEIS is based upon glowing statements about how wonderful it will be, how profitable it will be, how safe it will be, safe it will be, but this is written by writers, it's not written by scientists. For a multitude of reasons, the only conclusion we can come to is that the Ash for Trash process should immediately be suspended. Van Buren citizens do not want to landfill in their community to use for Anandaga ash. Well, guess what? We don't want it in the sole source aquifer recharge zone in our county. Up to 2 million tons, if you go for 95,000 tons for 20 years, 2 million tons of toximated ash. Who's going to pay for the liability for that? It's absolutely insane that Cortland should be saddled with that. We are working very hard to be sure that OCPRA does not have the option of using Cortland landfill for its ash. I have in my hand a copy of an email from Mike Conley, in which he states that OCPRA does not have plans or the desire to develop the permitted landfill at this time, because even without the partnership with Cortland County, there is sufficient landfill capacity in the state for reuse of the material as alternative daily cover. And I can submit this also. So we ask you, Anandaga residents and legislators, to be courageous and to join with legislators in Cortland County and Anandaga County to suspend the Ash for Trash project and support phasing out of the incinerator, as many communities around the country are doing. Can I keep talking a little bit more? Well, there's only one more person going to speak from Cortland County. Okay? Well, I would really like to say that when you improve your pollution control devices, it puts more pollution into the pollution control devices, and even those are supposed to go into our landfill. Those are the things that become completely... to go into our landfill. Those are the things that become completely loaded with the metals, the dioxins, the furans, and that's completely absurd. From the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, from the U.S. Department of Health, they say the best way to prevent toxins, dioxins, is from not producing them. And it concurs that incinerator ash containing significant amounts of dioxin should be basically kept away from human exposure. Prevention of such a legacy to succeeding generations is a strong reason for prevention of incineration. That is from the CDC website. I can give it all to you. Make sure you have it in your hand. I submitted it electronically already. Okay, so I guess one of the most important things I have to say is absolute demand that a health impact assessment is done per CDC guidelines because if you do, you will find that you probably should not allow that incinerator to keep burning because of all the rates of diseases that are expected to be generated by it. So I thank you very much. And like I said, I submitted 50 pages of comments. I went through the DEIS page by page, and it's mostly glowing statements. So ask scientists, okay? Thank you.
Good evening. As you learn, I'm Allison King, Health Policy Analyst, toxicologist, and a small business owner. And I came up here tonight with a neighbor of mine who lives near the landfill in McGraw, so came up from Cortland County. And she and others for over a year now have been urging me to oppose this Ash for Trash deal. And I said, "Look, I'm a scientist. I have to wait and see the data." So I dutifully submitted my questions a year alone, our first scoping period, and I submitted my questions in June in our second scoping period, and came here and came to Cortland County to say these significant, very important questions weren't addressed. The DEIS is not adequate. Both county legislatures approve the DEIS as adequate. At this point, I oppose the Ash for Trash deal. I'm sorry, I no longer have confidence that these very serious questions will be addressed before this deal moves forward. We here in Cortland County, I read my paper, 80% of the contract negotiations are done. We are supposed to be getting data. This was driven by economics. And I appreciate that both legislatures were trying to figure out how to make those tax dollars go farther. I mean, I'm a businessperson. Yes, that's really important. So one of the critical parts of the DEIS is the economic analysis. In Cortland County, we want to know flow control alone. What will that bring us? $600,000 a year. That covers our debt. What's in the DEIS? It's flow control plus Ash for Trash, but it doesn't say it's flow control. It just says Ash for Trash with 35,000 tons of our trash. That's flow control. What does it bring us? $800,000. So all of this stuff is for $200,000 a year difference, and it doesn't account for $1.5 million to build a transfer station, road repair, these other ongoing costs. So for me, I knew economic modeling. Our county didn't share the data, so I did the modeling myself. Their public data, our actuals, our budget actuals are public data. I trended them over time, trended them forward. For me, this was an emperor has no clothes on moment. Why are we talking about this? Why are we paying for a DEIS and an FEIS when we can solve our budget problems without your ash? We can mine it, our landfill, and our goal, our goal is to make that landfill last. The reason we have trouble right now is because we built two cells. We borrowed $9 million, and it cost us $15 million to pay them back. We've still got $11 million to go. We want to make that landfill last. How do we do that? The four Rs. And I credit you for the Great Recycling Program you've got here. Cortland County doesn't suddenly change our whole approach to trash by just shipping our trash north. We have to change how we manage our trash. We need to totally revamp. And when we look at what's happening elsewhere, we've heard about Covanta and its awards. Well, Corantica in New Jersey is an owner of some of the incinerators in Connecticut. The state of Connecticut announced it's shutting down its incinerators. Covanta's on record saying they want to work with the state of Connecticut. You can do that here. Covanta would partner. You make a decision to shut it down, move to the four Rs, and so people in Cortland County are worried about tipping fees going to go up, what's going to happen. So what we see, what we read in Connecticut, oh, we're going to lower tipping fees because trash is money. There's more money in recycling than there is in incineration. We heard from a young scientist that incineration is actually not producing energy, and burning trash is three to four times more energy than recycling those same materials. So I've talked some about the economics. This doesn't hold up from a Cortland County perspective. This doesn't hold up based on economics. The other major concern, I think that one we should talk about, the other major concern is the science, the health aspect. And this is my field. This is sort of my widest work. It is a tremendous concern that we are creating some of the most hazardous chemicals known, these dioxins and furans. We know, you have to go from the DEIS to the Health Department's report, you can see that ash is tested in it, that ash has dioxin in it. What level? Whoa, it's about the same level that's known to be above threshold for danger to, hey, follow your socks. And for my neighbor, who is a poller, she's going to be exposed to that. For the people in Jamesville, it's coming out of the specs. Now there it has good improvement. That's trash, and those chemicals would then be coming to Cortland County. So one of the comments that I made in the scoping period is elsewhere in the world, they deep-six this. They put these dioxins in Germany and Switzerland. It's buried in deep mines. So what happens in Syracuse? You take that fly ash and you mix it with the bottom ash so it's diluted enough that it passes standards and it can be landfilled. Is that the best thing to do? Is that the right thing to do? We know dioxins are in the ash. We did ask in scoping for suitable tests of ash at other landfills and what the impact is in the surrounding area. We don't have a health impact assessment. What we got is lead chain analysis, but dioxin's fat soluble, not water soluble. So lead chain analysis isn't going to help us understand what the threat is for dioxin. So that's an example of an issue that hasn't been addressed yet, but what we see when we look to our federal regulatory authorities is the best way to not bring dioxin into the environment, is not to create it in the first place. I want to shift a little bit here. So I've been speaking. These comments reflect a group of citizens in Cortland County. We formed an Environmental Advisory Board, which is an independent citizens association with a range of people, range of backgrounds to understand this. But actually, the first thing we give, you know, I'm kind of sick of nimbyism, not in my backyard. We're not helping our legislators if we just say this is bad and we don't have an alternative. So before we came up with our Just Say No statement, we worked on solutions. And I appreciate that, and I've been hearing tonight, how folks here want to help Cortland County. So we have solutions, and we can improve our own solid waste management without bringing ash in and enabling you and supporting a decision to phase out your incinerator. The Environmental Advisory Board supports environmentally and fiscally responsible management of solid waste in our county. This solution statement is not only supported by the Citizens' Association, it's supported by the League of Women Voters of Cortland County. The U.S. League of Women Voters has been working on solid waste issues since the 1980s, when actually the U.S. League opposed incineration. The U.S. League supports policies to reduce generation and promote the use and recycling of solid and hazardous waste. So just briefly tuck along here on our solutions. One, maximize longevity of our current landfill, which is a financial investment and a county asset. Ash for Trash would close it sooner. And then what do we do? So four Rs to reduce landfill waste, avoid costly expansion. We do not have a hydrogeologically suitable area. The till is not deep enough for us to expand at that site. And as we all know, I want to avoid site-in-a-new landfill. That just divides communities. So our second goal is to finance county solid waste services through integrated sustainable methods. That's not Ash for Trash. We can pay off our daddy current costs through flow control and moving forward with the four Rs. Take the responsibility for the trash that we generate. Setting tipping fees to best serve our residents, and there is optimism there that tipping fees can actually go down with revenues from the four Rs and to better bring that into a profitable operation. And then lastly, utilizing our current landfill more efficiently. We here in our county that some things are going into the landfill that shouldn't be. We don't fix that by shipping our trash north. We fix that by properly managing our current landfill. We can reduce amount that we're covered so we're not mining shale for cover, all kinds of things like that that we can do independently with the Anadaga County Board. We appreciate your willingness to partner with us and your time this evening. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Regional Partnership Public Hearing. My name is Pat Kilmarnock. I am Majority Leader for the County Legislature, and I'm standing in place of the Chairman of the Legislature, Ryan McMahon, who is out of state right now and couldn't be here. He sends his apologies. And we have a number of legislators here this evening, not the entirety of the legislature, but many of them, to attend tonight and hear your public comments and thoughts about the topic before us tonight. So at this time, we'll call the meeting to order, and the public hearing is now called to order for the purposes of considering the draft environmental impact statement prepared for the Regional Solid Waste Partnership Project, which is under consideration under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Before we start, just a couple of housekeeping items. If everyone, especially considering how tight we are in the room tonight, can just recognize the two exits we have here and be aware of those as the meeting proceeds. We also ask everyone to, if they could, turn off their cell phones in advance of the hearing, just to be respectful of those folks that might be speaking tonight. And I would, at this time, ask the clerk to read the notice of the public hearing.
Turn on the draft environmental impact statement.
It's a motion to waive the reading of just the mere fact that this was published, which is obviously part of the reason why you folks are here tonight. So we'll accept a waiver of the reading of the notice that was previously published. And at this time, Pam, clerk, the notice was duly published?
It was.
Okay, thank you. Folks, we have a number of speakers here tonight, and we're very happy to hear your public comments and your thoughts about the topic before us. Just for clarification, again, the specific reason, according to applicable law, for us here tonight is for comments that we welcome from all you folks relating to the draft environmental impact statement and the issues that have been brought before the legislature to date on that. I just want to clarify for whatever it might be worth for folks who are here tonight who are speaking or listening, there is not before us any kind of issue or any kind of resolution regarding a landfill, just for absolute clarification to everyone. That issue has been brought up to a very, very limited degree with different folks who have come before the legislature to speak on different issues. I just wanted to clarify that for anybody who wanted to speak tonight, that the purpose for the meeting is to address the draft environmental impact statement and all the related issues. So I just wanted to provide that for clarification. We have a number of folks who have signed up to speak tonight. Anyone wishing to speak, we would ask them to sign up at the back of the room. There's a table there. People can provide their names so that they can get on the list to speak tonight. We'll take folks in the order that they signed up. We're happy to take all those who are interested in speaking tonight. What we will try to do is call a couple of names at one time so that people can line up behind the microphone to help move the process along so you folks aren't here very, very late tonight. If possible, we would ask people to try to limit their comments to three to four minutes. We don't want to cut anyone off. We want to be very respectful of your comments and your thoughts. But considering the number of people in the room tonight, if it's possible to keep your comments to three or four minutes, I think that would be helpful for the other folks that are here. And we've had a number of hearings on these related topics. If anyone has spoken at a prior public hearing where we've taken public comment with minutes and recordings and so on, and those same people have very similar or duplicate comments, we'd ask them to try to keep those brief, just so those folks who haven't appeared before have a full chance to speak and have their comments being heard. Because at all these public hearings, everything is recorded. They're made a part of the record. Minutes are created for our review. So we're just trying to be respectful of everybody who has an interest in speaking tonight. All right, so sorry for the length of those introductory comments, but just wanted to give people the context of the meeting and the process that we'll try to follow to keep it orderly for everyone. So without further delay, I'll call the first few folks who have signed up. The first people would be Todd Ludwig, the second will be Robert Daye Senior, and the third would be Vicki Baker. Just as soon as you get to the podium, feel free to go right ahead.
Good evening, residents of Anadaga County. My name is Tom Ludwig. I'm a resident of Anadaga County and a neighbor of the Anadaga County Waste and Energy Facility. I have been a resident and next-door neighbor of the facility for 47 years. Cortland County has come to Anadaga County looking for a better option. I believe OCPRA and Covanna offer the best choice using energy from waste. I'm not off the grid. I do not ride a bicycle everywhere I go. I do not live in a tent, nor do the majority of Central New York residents. I enjoy electricity, a warm home. Winter here is very unforgiving, as we all in this room brave to come here this evening. When you go home this evening, your heat will be warming your house, your lights will turn on. Let that continue. The OCPRA-Covanna Waste and Energy Facility has permitted the process, 361,350 tons per year by the New York City CDC. Bringing in Cortland County waste will not exceed that limit. Cortland County trash process at the facility will remove many more recyclable materials from the waste stream. That at this time are going into Cortland County ground with no reuse for any generation to follow. I ask of you, my neighbors, residents of Anadaga County, residents of Cortland County, let's make the right choice today. Let the OCPRA-Covanna Waste and Energy Facility continue to produce renewable energy from the waste both of our counties produce for our generation and all that will occupy this town after we're gone. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Mr. Daye, followed by Vicki Baker, followed by Patrick Brown.
Hello, my name is Robert Daye, and I've worked for Covanna for 20 years. I believe in facts received from scientific data. The fact is that Covanna-Anadaga continually performs well below any federal or state emissions guideline proven by its documented, award-winning environmental performance track record. The Environmental Protection Agency has deemed energy from waste to be higher on the waste hierarchy than landfilling. In fact, methane is 20 more times more potent than CO2 in reference to greenhouse gases affecting the environment. Covanna has helped many organizations, which you will hear about, with funding to improve their programs. Now with an annual permit to burn 361,350 tons, they would like to help the neighbors such as Cortland County to improve their waste program. We will reduce truck ash delivery emissions to less distance traveled. We do not come close to burning what we are permitted to and burn less now than what we have in the past. Why not be a good labor and clean up the world, not just our backyard? I strongly believe in the concept of reuse, recycle, and energy from waste. Now let's join OCPRA, Cortland County, and Covanna Energy. Now, let's join OPAH, Cortland County, and Covanna Energy for power today to protect tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have Vicki Baker next, followed by Patrick Brown.
I don't want to put my back to all these people. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Closer to the mic without turning. Can I turn it a little?
Yeah.
Without that. Good evening. Some of you I might have met years ago when your legislator was Bob Warner and I was representing that Duett area. Excuse me, I have asthma now, so I don't speak as loud as I used to. When Bob and I faced the issue of the county citing the incinerator and landfill years ago, we drew the short sticks. We had to do what we could to represent our communities from importation to try to protect our community. So, at this point, I'm here because this is the last thing that Van Buren should be supporting, because you're still a permanent landfill. And if you can't, like, obviously, we thought we were protected by the law that they now want to rescind. They could change their minds on Van Buren at any time. And I don't think you want trash coming in and ending up as ash in Van Buren. Some of the things we faced living here in Incinerator, obviously, is a litter long way, but cancer rates that are now prevalent in our community. We have faced things like the ash trucks leaking from here to the Alana thruway, a trash pile of violations of hydrogen fluoride leaks. It goes on and on. And so, what we did as a community in Duett was become proactive, because I think we should all be working together for this next seven generations, not pitting ourselves against each other. One community against another is not the way to go. So, we became active in Duett. We have created a volume-based waste reduction system. We have joined climate smart communities. We developed a climate action plan. We installed solar panels on the town. We have an ongoing sustainability plan. We hosted an expert to come and talk to this community about jobs and from recycling. Again, we should be working together. I don't want to say that politicians lie, but things happen and things change. And now, they want to change the protection that we have for both of our communities. So, it's not just Duett. And I urge Van Buren to really look at the implications of supporting importation of waste, because once it's slippery slope, once it door opens, there's no turning back. And I urge you to consider the impact. The things that come out of that plant, the fellow that was just here, I'm sure a lot of you are not aware, because all you've seen is the advertisements that it's every day is Earth Day, and it's clean renewable energy. This is not renewable energy. And the AG's office did a study that they were probably one of the highest sources of mercury and pollutants in the state. They are not renewable. Formaldehyde, benzene-led mercury, arsenic, SO2, hydrofluoric acid, fine particulates that get in deep into your lungs. I'm a grandma now, and I've come full circle. My son was two and a half when we started this nonsense, and now, my third granddaughter was born yesterday. I'm voting for that next generation and the next seven. And I urge you to work with us to formulate a system for this community to phase out the incinerator, create jobs from recycling, and protect our environment. There's a way to do it, and it's a very simple way, not paying Covanna $14 million a year to run this plant. There are opportunities, and I urge you to take a look. Now, we have to send anybody information that needs it. As far as the BDIS, there's no information about finances. We're totally lacking on anything that we can come on. It's totally lacking. And the Regional Partnership want to give us all the food, which is regional money. And if they're not talking about other communities, they will be. And I think you better get it and write it. Thank you.
We have Patrick Brown next, followed by Ron DeZinski, followed by Morris Baker.
Good evening, legislators. Thank you for allowing us to have the comment tonight. My name is Patrick Brown. I'm a lifelong resident of Jamesville. Very proud to live there. I am a school administrator for an award-winning school district in central New York. I serve on several community boards in my own community of Jamesville and on the school board as well. Tonight, I'd like to start by reading some statistical information from the Onondaga County Health Department's 2014-17 Community Health Assessment Improvement Plan. All of these quotes come directly from the plan on the county website. This information comes from the section labeled "Key Findings on Health Status of Onondaga County Residents." Onondaga County fares better than New York State indicators of heart disease. That's great. But worse on indicators of cancer, morbidity, and mortality despite high screening rates. This next information comes from the same plan, but from a section labeled "Cancer." In Onondaga County, the incidence of all cancers is increasing. Each week, approximately 52 Onondaga County residents are diagnosed with cancer and approximately 19 die of cancer. That's every week. The incidence rates of the three common cancers, we have breast, lung, and prostate, are statistically significantly higher in Onondaga County compared to New York State and the U.S. Both incidents of mortality from lung cancer is statistically significantly higher in Onondaga County. In a review of the incidences of breast cancer in that same plan from the findings for Onondaga County for 2005-2009 by ZipCode, Jamesville had 61 cases of breast cancer observed. 40.7 cases were actually expected based on prior data. The incidences were more than 50% above the expected incident rate. The only other area on that report, which is all by ZipCode, which is close to the incineration plant, that, excuse me, had more than 50% above the expected rate was Nedro, which is right next door to us. All of the other Zip Codes in Onondaga County were either within or slightly above expected cases. No others as high as Jamesville and Nedro. In the world of education, we don't simply collect data. We're expected to use it. We use the data to make informed decisions. When you, as a legislator, know about these numbers, and if you don't, you should, you should be alarmed and wondering what environmental impacts are really coming from this plan. Seeing that data on the increase in occurrences of breast cancer over a four- to five-year period, isolated to one small area is got to have me wondering. I actually have read about 80% of the hundreds of pages that are part of the draft environmental impact statement document. It took me a long time to do that. Now, I've read and worked on creating a lot of documents, policies, plans, et cetera, in my career, and never have I seen a more contrived piece of work. Every potential impact that's listed discusses the collaboration of these two counties in a no-impact statement. That causes me to wonder, from habitat, wetland concerns, to air quality concerns, to health concerns, to pollution concerns, to increased pollution from trucks, to hazardous ash residue. This document states in just about every incidence on every page that there will be no environmental impact. The engineers have used their formulas for calculating no impact pretty well here, and to the advantage of the collaboration. It's like, everything's okay, like, no problem. We'll do it, and we'll generate our revenue. Well, haven't we already seen an impact? The breast cancer rates in Jamesville alone are out of control, as I've documented to you from your own government data. Lung and prostate incidences continue to rise in the Zip Code as well as several others close by. It's not time to start importing trash from anywhere. It's time to seriously create a solid waste management plan, because we don't have one now that looks at much more than just revenue. To rescind the law that a former group of legislators passed, and not that long ago, as a measure to protect the health and welfare of their residents and constituents, is abominable. Cortland needs to think in a similar vein. There are not just a few of us that are concerned about this, as stated by several legislators, including Joanie Mahoney. There have never been just a few. A few people could not have put all the pressure on the legislators as they did years ago to create the ban that exists on importation. That just didn't magically happen. I'm urging you to start looking at the health data with a close, well-trained eye and to start making connections. It's not too late. I'm requesting that you do not rescind the law on the ban on importation of trash from other counties to Onondaga County. I'm also requesting that you, as a group of elected officials, begin to truly craft a solid waste management plan that addresses the health and welfare of the future generations that are going to reside in the county. This plan will include a phase-out of incineration over a five- to seven-year period and begin immediately, not over a five- to seven-year period, this part is immediately, to investigate and implement increased efforts to reuse, recycle, compost. I'll be happy to direct you to some highly-trained professionals and consultants who have expertise in this area and can help you. Thank you.
Next, we have Ron DeZinski, followed by Morris Baker, followed by Patricia Riley and Mike Riley.
Thank you, legislature. My name is Ron DeZinski. I'm one of the councilors of the county of Van Buren, and I support the waste to trash. I would like to see us do that. We don't want the landfill out here in the county of Van Buren, and I'm sure our residents don't want it out here. And that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We have Morris Baker next, followed by Patricia Riley and Mike Riley.
My name is Morris Baker. I'm known by Mole. Thanks to my baby sister who couldn't pronounce Morris when she was little, so the family tagged me with that. But in any event, this thing that we're talking about tonight needs to be thoroughly, thoroughly investigated before we make any kind of a decision. Nobody allowed that. I remember when they put the gas tanks in, less than a quarter of a mile away from my house, nobody allowed this kind of a meeting. No. It was done because the richest man in the county wanted to put the gas tanks out here, and he bought two cheap forms in order to do it. And then, we put it in there. I want everybody to give it a serious thought in regards to where this project will go 20 years down the road. Cortland County is the first county. Oswego County will follow. Herkiver County will follow. Cayuta County will follow. Madison County will follow. That plant will not be able to hold or burn all of it. So, it will grow also. We need to take things like this into consideration before we really make a decision on it. I'm not saying eliminate it, because it is a good project and has to be done, okay? But maybe the plant should be moved versus everybody driving trucks in and out, in and out, in and out. I have 24/7 in a day, 24/7 hours a day, gas trucks going by my house. And all the county did for me and my neighbors was put in 38 feet of my front lawn, and they wanted me to bait doctors on it. That went over like a fart in church. But, in any event, things like this have to be thought over very, very seriously, okay? Thank you for giving the information.
Thank you, sir. We have Patricia Riley, followed by Mike Riley, followed by Claude Sykes and Anthony Geis.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Riley. I have license in maritime engineering, and I've been in the power plant industry for over 25 years. I understand that this meeting being held is in regards to a proposed ash-for-trash proposal with Cortland County. From what I have read, opponents of the trash-for-ash proposal are openly advocating that the Waste Energy Facility in Jamesville should be shut down and Site 31 open as a trash landfill instead. I personally find this appalling. The systems in the modern waste-to-energy plant make it cleaner than home fireplaces and backyard barbecues. For those of us that understand the science and technology behind these systems, it's like saying, let's take away everyone's cellphone and go back to rotary phones because it's so much simpler to use. We have an award-winning Waste Energy Facility that uses the latest technology, decreases the volume of the county revenues by 90%, provides electricity to the grid, recovers ferrous and non-ferrous metals from the ash to be recycled, and can also provide ash for landfill cover to replace the virgin soil as a cover. On top of that, OPAH has an award-winning recycling program in place. We have an efficient and effective system that is already in place. Why would we want to change that? Adding the cost of running yet another landfill that the taxpayer will have to support just adds insult to injury. Landfills are the least desirable in the last resort in waste system. Methane has more than 72 times the global warming potential than CO2 over a 20-year period. And even when methane gases are collected, methane still seeps into the atmosphere. By allowing ash for trash, we will effectively be decreasing the methane entering our atmosphere and use ash for cover, saving soil for farming and bringing food to our dinner place. If anything, we should expand on the Waste Energy System we already have in place. Cortland has the sense to recognize what a good thing we have going here and wants to be a part of that. By taking Cortland's trash and providing them with ash, we are just doing more of a good thing. To say no because it's not within our county, I believe, is ridiculous. They are within our world, and what they do has a direct impact on all our lives. The emissions from China doesn't stay in China. It doesn't recognize borders and fall from the air when it reaches our borders. We need to educate ourselves, expand our thinking, look at the big picture, and do the right thing. Based on the article "Methane vs. CO2 Global Warming Potential," focusing disproportionately on controlling those greenhouse gases like carbon dioxide that produce warming impacts in the distant future at the expense of not controlling those gases like methane that inflict climate disruption impacts in the immediate future could yield a harvest of regrets. In the words of Nobel laureate Dr. Kirk R. Smith, "Doing so engenders the undesirable result of spending more money to protect people thousands of years into the future and ignoring the needs of ourselves and our children."
We have Mike Riley, followed by Claude Sykes and Anthony Geis.
Hello, my name is Michael Riley. And I stand before you today as a concerned veteran and citizen of Onondaga County and the community in general. I'm discussing whether the landfill will burn, ash for trash, smoke or not to smoke, and many other questions in today's society. We create forums, groups to brainstorm and develop new technology. It's just an example I use in car emissions. Over a timeline progression to technology, which, it doesn't eliminate the pollutants, but it continually reduces the pollutants as we progress. I am for the energy for waste industry because of the effects that exist here in Onondaga County, but not limited to just what I've put here. But one, the plant Covanna's facilities' long history of past ash testing, Covanna's award-winning track record of emissions control, the facility recycling all metals, ferrous and non-ferrous, the electronic waste collection program, and $1,000 put into many community development programs such as Wildlife Sanctuary at Wester Pine, benefiting veterans and disabled and no help from other local businesses and individuals. The concern that the energy from waste plants will reduce recycling efforts is in fact wrong, which can be seen from Locas' world-class recycling program and Covanna's track record. During the recycling process, approximately 15% of the recycling volume is waste. The question is, where does this waste go? Landfilling, energy from waste? Well, EPA did a website, yeah, I'm sorry, the EPA did a study. It's on their website under Science Matters newsletter, discusses their findings for greenhouse gas emissions. The study shows that under ideal conditions, greenhouse gas emissions in landfills are two to six times higher than energy from waste plants. Per unit electricity. two to six times higher than energy from waste plants per unit of electricity produced from them. So in summary, even if the U.S. doubled its rate of recycling, there would still be hundreds of millions of tons of post-recycled and post-composted solid waste. New technology and scientific methods will eventually be discovered and reduce that post-generated waste. So in a high-grade waste triangle, landfilling is the last resort. So let's use the best available technology to work together as neighbors to solve waste management issues. Therefore, I support ash for trash and the plant facility in Jamesville. This is why I believe in reduce, reuse, recycle, recover, and not landfill. Thank you.
Followed by Mr. Sykes and Mr. Geis is Jane Brown, followed by Kate Brown.
Claude Sykes, I'm the town supervisor in Town of Van Buren. Welcome to Van Buren. Sorry it's so cold tonight. Sorry you're so proud of it up there. We took your sales tax money, so we couldn't accommodate you.
I'm surprised it took you that long to bring that up, Claude.
Assemblyman Mike Riley contacted me this afternoon, his office did. He's in Albany, and he sent out a statement that he would like me to read on his behalf. Is my contention to fully support any opposition to the location of a landfill site being located off Brickyard Road in Town of Van Buren as part of the proposal being discussed regarding the ash-for-trash solid waste management partnership between Onondaga and Portland County. I am in accord with Supervisor Sykes's statement that the Brickyard Road site should not now once again become a consideration for a landfill if the current agreement between Onondaga County and Portland County fails. I am pleased to read that Onondaga County Legislature Chairman Ryan McMahon stated that the Brickyard Road site in Van Buren is not being considered as an alternative. I want my position to be perfectly clear that landfill in Van Buren should not be an alternative now or in the future, Assemblyman Mike Riley. And I heard your comments about the landfill. I'd like to say it's near and dear to our heart, but it's not. So there will be a couple of comments in my comments. Thank you for holding this hearing here in Van Buren, where the town and its residents have the vested interest in our stakeholders in the business of waste disposal for the county. The Town of Van Buren fully supports the trash-for-ash concept and believes it is the most feasible option since it offers the best economic and environmental solutions and utilizes existing infrastructure and facilities and improves efficiencies in doing so. The Town of Van Buren wants to go on record, as it has historically, as being vehemently opposed to Site 31 ever being utilized as a landfill for ash or raw garbage, and will vigorously oppose any attempts to do so as we have before. We applaud Oprah's efforts in bringing the trash-for-ash concept into consideration and urge legislature to adopt this plan. We feel this is a no-brainer decision since it offers huge cost avoidance and is environmentally sound. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Anthony Geis. I've been a resident of Onondaga County all my life, a resident out here in the Town of Van Buren for over 40 years, and I've been involved in the town government here for over 30 years and currently serve as the Chair of the Planning Board. I am here to speak to the draft environmental statement. I am in favor of the trash-for-ash that you are considering at this time. This is a regional solid waste solution for the county and for the general central New York area. As with Claude, I can't go without saying something about Site 31. I've been involved in that for about 20 years ago, I actually said, on the Committee for Compensation for the Neighbors at that time. I challenged, along with many of my neighbors and other town residents, the viability of that being here in the town, and I continue to challenge the viability. It's been 20 years. The environmental review would require major rework to even be considered again, and also the compliance with the new regs that are involved today. So again, I am in favor of the regional solid waste solution. I see it as a benefit of all of Onondaga County. Thank you.
We have Jane Brown next, followed by Kate Brown, followed by Mary Brown, and followed by Chad Norton.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jane Brown, and I am a New Media Marketing Major at Rochester Institute of Technology and have been a resident of Jamesville my whole life. I just want to begin by saying that no corporation has given me any incentive or content for me to speak here tonight on their behalf. I would like to discuss some facts about the so-called waste-to-energy facilities, including the Jamesville Plan. I hope that you, as a legislator, know that there is no such thing as waste-to-energy. Waste-to-energy is a public relations term used by incinerator promoters, including the promoters who operate the Jamesville facility, but is not an accurate term scientifically as there is no such thing. In the bigger picture, they are waste of energy facilities. They are built to burn trash. The small amount of electricity produced is a secondary function in a sales pitch. Scientifically, there is no such thing as waste-to-energy. Matter cannot be turned into energy without a nuclear reaction, and that's not what happens with incinerators. Anyone who is an advocate for the environment has come to call the waste-to-energy facilities waste of energy facilities because they know that recycling and composting the same discarded materials saves three to five times as much energy as incinerators can ever recover. Municipal solid waste trash incineration is the most expensive and polluting way to manage waste or to make energy. Incineration is a dirty word, and the industry who operates incinerators knows it. So they use other terms to make it sound good, like resource recovery, trash-to-steam, waste-to-energy, renewable energy and energy from waste. All of these terms are untruthful and misleading. Additionally, incinerators are terrible ways to produce jobs. For every 10,000 tons of waste processed per year, incinerators and landfills create one job, while recycling facilities create 10 jobs, and reuse, remanufacturing, and repairing materials creates far more, 20 to 300 jobs depending on the material. With a national recycling rate of less than 33%, the U.S. recycling industries currently provide over 800,000 jobs. A national recycling rate of 75% would create 1.5 million jobs. Now that's a plan to work for. Stop the ridiculous conversations about continuing with this waste-to-energy for 20 more years for Onondaga County and start trying to keep young people like me here and healthy and employed. You have a big decision to make, but I have to say that the decision should be clear to you. Incinerators stop forward movement towards zero waste. Waste-to-energy is simply not the case. It is a waste of energy. This industry creates no jobs and creates a very grim future for the young people of this country. Do you want to be the leaders who are responsible for that? Thank you.
Hello again, legislators. My name is Kate Brown, and I'm 12 years old and in 7th grade. Last time I spoke to you, I told you about how my 3rd grade class took a trip to the incinerator. After giving us a tour, they proceeded to tell us all the good things the incinerator does for our county. And that the air is filtered and is improving our air quality, all while powering 30,000 homes a year. These are the lives that have been fed to us by Covanta. I would just like to say this is only partly true. Yes, it may power 30,000 homes a year, but there are hundreds of thousands of homes in Onondaga County. The air coming out of the stacks may be lightly filtered, but is still ridden with lead, dioxin, mercury, arsenic, and who knows what else. And now they are trying to bring in another county's trash as well. Increasingly amount of chemicals coming out of the stacks. Bringing in Portland County's trash would burn up to 25,000 tons a year from the neighboring Portland county. In return, Onondaga's incinerator would send up to 90,000 tons of ash to Portland's landfill. Burning trash is a toxic, outdated method. Tons of other counties and even states have integrated more recycling, and some have even totally eliminated the idea of an incinerator. We can too integrate more recycling and composting in our county. It is very simple and not time-consuming at all. Many do not use a composter or do not recycle because they don't have enough time or it's not even good. All it takes is a couple of seconds to throw your piece of paper into the recycling bin rather than the trash can, or walk outside and try to crank on your composter. There are other methods of getting rid of trash that aren't harmful. As I grow up here in Onondaga County, I would like to see my community grow, not die of cancerous emissions that are supposed to be cleansed. And with that, I urge you to veto the idea of bringing in Portland County's trash. Thank you.
We have Mary Brown next, followed by Chad Norton, followed by Randy Walken.
My name is Mary Brown, and I live and care for my family and extended family in Onondaga County. I have a BS in Hotel Management and MBA from Mary's College, as well as a CAS in Executive Leadership. I am speaking tonight because I'm a college professor who teaches business and ethics and morals to young people of this area. I live my life by walking the talk, and I hope as elected officials you do as well. Tonight, I would like to speak briefly about the decision you will have to make and tenacity. It is easy to admire courage doing the right thing despite fear or danger, but tenacity can be hard to understand. Tenacious people can be irritating, and we often dismiss them by saying they have a B under their phonics for need to get a life. One person's moral imperative is often another's minor preference. Some people work hard to save the air and the environment, while others pay no attention to this issue. But these differences are not arbitrary or perky. They are personal, deep-rooted, and tell us who someone really is. They tell us who you are, county legislators, and where your morals and principles lie. As leaders, you have found that some people, decision or event, got under your skin. You have felt that you had to do something about it because it affected you in a strong, personal way. You did not get involved or take action because you thought something was wrong. You also felt something was wrong. As legislators, you don't act because you think you should, but because you have no choice. Tenacity matters, because as county leaders, you often face uphill battles. You may feel more like a bug than the windshield. In many cases, you may feel alone and isolated and have to work hard and long to achieve what you believe is important. In short, your efforts may resemble, excuse me, may resemble a long guerrilla war rather than a glorious cavalry charge. This prospect discourages some people from acting or persevering, but not you. You are our county legislators. Let the young, future business leaders of this area see that you have acted because you care and that your motives are strong and ethical. Be tenacious. Protect our air, our health, and the environment for generations to come. I implore you to have the courage to do the right thing. No ash for trash.
Thank you. We have Chad Norton, followed by Randy Walken, followed by Kim Holbert.
Good evening, one and all. I am here before you to say my support for the ash for trash in the Covanta facility. When I was younger, I didn't really understand the process of recycling or the importance of it. I have since became involved with the Covanta facility and have much better understanding of what they are all about. Covanta of Onondaga supplies energy from trash to 30,000 homes. I know some people think that they pollute, and I can't say that they don't, but statistics show that the plant is way below emission standards set by the NYSDEC. The plant themselves has received, excuse me, an Old Excellence Award for their trashed energy three years out of ten. I recently toured the Covanta facility, and I have much better understanding about how they operate and how the trash is separated safely and efficiently. I urge anybody that would like to set up a tour, if you don't understand Covanta, and they don't only burn trash, they support the community. Like I said, my name is Chad Norton, and I'm from the Anglers Association of Onondaga. Most of you legislators probably know me. I've been before you a couple of times. But at any rate, I would like to thank Covanta for helping us to support our recent project to make Webster Pond environmentally friendly with a handicap accessible trail. And I vote yes of the ash for trash. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have Randy Walken, followed by Kim Holbert, followed by Fred Birch and Martha Low.
Mr. President, thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. My name is Randy Walken and I'm president of MACNE, the Manufacturers Association. As you know, as many of you know, MACNE is the great association representing over 330 member companies with 55,000 employees within a 26-county region, including Onondaga and Portland County. And we exist, actually, in advocate of the growth and development of the manufacturing sector within New York State. We were founded in 1913, and we advocate positive and enable New York State's manufacturing sector to grow and thrive in today's competitive market. I come here today to offer MACNE's support for the Onondaga Solid Waste Management Plan and specifically incorporating the new trash-for-ash plan, which has been negotiated with Portland County. As you're well aware, our community has distinguished itself nationally for our outstanding recycling programs and progressive, modern waste management. It's important for us to continue these efforts and the reputation we have deservedly earned. It's one such way being the trash-for-ash proposal, which we call Portland County. The trash-for-ash proposal makes our community more attractive as we attempt to keep, grow, and attract new jobs and economic activity. Additionally, the cost savings for the region with this partnership is quite significant. These savings from the new agreement with Portland County will be shared between residents, businesses, institutions, and municipalities in both towns. As president of the Business Trade Association based right here in Onondaga County, it's one of my many roles and responsibilities to support services that provide benefits to local manufacturers. The services Covanta provides to the region are exemplary, and they're examples of a local business, not only dedicated to its business and employees, but our community as a whole. Covanta Energy Waste Disposal Services have been a benefit to the region's businesses and residents alike. One such way Covanta benefits the community is through its good paying, high-quality jobs and its overall contribution to our region's economy. Additionally, the facility located here in Syracuse calls for the usage of many local businesses and their vendors, whether it's through contractors for maintenance, repair, or purchases of local goods and services for their facilities. Collectively, this amounts to millions of dollars directly into our local economy. Another benefit of Covanta Energy has brought to our region is providing a service that allows for ease of responsible and environmentally sound waste disposal, an absolute necessity for any modern manufacturing facility. The facility was designated and designed with the original intent to process both residential and commercial waste for the county after reuse, reduction, and recycling efforts were completed. Remaining waste is then either processed into clean renewable energy or properly landfill. These days, much emphasis on government oversight has to do with responsible cleanup and environmental responsibility, with high costs often associated. Manufacturers here regionally take this responsibility very seriously, and with the longtime partnership with Covanta and their Waste Disposal Services, they are allowed to conduct everyday business while working with Covanta Services to enable proper waste practices to be followed and therefore abide by all of these environmental regulations. Another significant benefit Covanta Services is its regional location, allowing for a significant cost reduction, especially to manufacturers. Prior to the construction of the Jamesville facility, manufacturers had no choice but transport their waste to a landfill in Pennsylvania, over 300 miles away. Transporting over state lines and other variables ensures the safety of disposal of their waste made for 30 to 50% higher cost to these businesses. During such difficult economic times, manufacturers cannot afford to add these burdens to their overhead costs. By maintaining an environmentally sound, top-quality facility here in our region where businesses can properly dispose of their waste, Covanta assists in keeping our region's businesses' costs to a minimum. Another benefit Covanta Energy brings to the region is its longtime dedication and commitment to best safety practices. For over 100 years, MACNE has been an integral part of best safety practices for businesses in New York. and we take great pride in recognizing regional businesses for their quality, continued services, and safety and business support. As a longtime MACNE member, I'm pleased to report that Covanta has been recognized multiple times by MACNE and its partners for quality safety practices, including the MACNE OSHA Alliance Safety Work for Best Practices in areas such as ergonomics, overall safety best practices, and we also have awarded the Outstanding Support Award from MACNE's Faculty Management Council. As you can see, Covanta is undoubtedly an asset in this region and one that our residents and businesses would certainly miss should their services discontinued. Their continued dedication supporting MACNE member businesses and other businesses and residents coupled with their undisputed best practices and commitment to quality service makes Covanta Energy not only integral part of our business community, but the region as a whole. We're proud to support Covanta and the trash for trash proposal and look forward to them providing our region with top quality services for your town. Thanks for your time.
We have Kim Holbert followed by Fred Birch followed by Martha Low.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Kimberly Holbert, as you mentioned. As a resident of Jamesville for over 40 years, I disapprove of this project and the increased airborne pollutants that will affect our environment. I've seen many, many neighbors, over half the folks on the street I grew up on and swiftly drive less than a mile from the plant. They've either died of cancer over the past 30 years or contracted some form of it. Some include Rita Freeman, Ralph Hawkins, Mr. and Mrs. Hammer, Lucy Hawkins, Phil Penn, Linda Brennan, Wilfred Brown, and my father, to name a few. Why would we want to increase the airborne emissions? For years, I've seen the Department of Health with trucks at the corner of Southwood collecting air samples. Clearly, this has already been a concern for over 20 years. I feel that many of those who have spoken for the Ash for Trash Project do not live in the close vicinity of the plant, therefore would not necessarily be impacted directly with the carcinogenic and environmental hazards of this proposal to their immediate families. I think if they, I think they would think differently if they did live closer. I'm concerned about the long-term health risk to my family, friends, and community of being outside and breathing the air on a daily basis now and for the generations to come. Money isn't everything.
Fred Birch followed by Ms. Low and followed by John Scavetti.
Hi, my name is Fred Birch. I'm a lifelong resident of the town of Lysander and a business owner there. I'm here on the behalf of relatives and friends that reside in the immediate area surrounding Site 31 Brick Yard Road. I just wanted to thank this body for welcoming people here to speak their mind tonight. I wanted to thank everybody who came up and spoke tonight. One of the ideas that I've heard tonight that I think is a fantastic direction to take and something that, you know, I've only seen one person mention, is the administrator from DeWitt who mentioned that how important it is to look at the long-term plan. I think that's something that we should be looking at now and so that doesn't become a problem five, 10 years down the road from now. I own property that's located on Church Road in Lysander. I had experience, it's property that belonged to my grandparents. It's been in the family for a long time and I have experience with a landfill being located extremely close. The old landfill used to be on Town Line Road. And my grandparents' property is located roughly about two miles away from that and I can tell you that every time that we went out there to visit, the stench, you know, that was carrying, just happened to be downwind from that area. And another concern that is never talked about is, you know, the animals that come into the area that weren't part of the area when it started, specifically birds and seagulls and everything, which bring in contamination. That's one thing that should be considered. I decided to do some research on this, a little bit of research. I spent the better half of an afternoon just contacting some people and looking online and I, I found out that that Site 31 has got a D.E.C. permit until, I believe, March of 2016. And I was interested in knowing if this body had any intentions at all in extending that permit beyond that time period. And then the last thing I'd like to mention is I had an opportunity to speak with three town supervisors who run towns in the immediate area where Site 31 is being proposed. And the one overriding thing that I kept coming up, that kept coming up was Fred, we don't have the infrastructure for that. The roads aren't properly built for it. There's millions of dollars that are going to have to be invested in that to where it would be compliant for that type of thing. And I just wanted to mention those points and make sure there was something that you guys had considered. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Martha Low followed by John Scavetti followed by Mark Berger and Dr. Robinson there.
My name is Martha Low. I represent Sierra Club in the Southern New York area, and Sierra Club is definitely on record as not in favor of incineration and has recommendations, including, it's from a fellow named Neil Stelton, we brought him here about a month ago and we met with various people within the, oh, I live in Jamesville that way. And I'm a cancer survivor. And he recommends that we change our habits and take a five-year look at the incinerator and take gradual reductions of all the waste that we have by recycling wastes and making them into useful products. This is a way to slowly get out of the dilemma that we're in. The machine is there and we put it there, but I think it's time to take it down. And so as Sierra Club, also speaking to the D.E.I.S., there's no environmental impact record recorded for any plants, animals, so forth and so on. Also, in the financial area, there are lots of limitations that are not mentioned. The permits that everybody talks about that is saying, you know, they're great, we come under the threshold, they are not permits, they are permission and money paid to pollute. Those permits, if you look at them, you have, okay, you have so many emissions up to this amount. And for all of those, as long as you're up over this top, if you pay us enough money, we'll let you do that. So it's really permission to pollute. That's what all of those numbers are about, that's what all of, and we are at the top of almost all of them. So all in all, with the permits, we've played over, paid over the life of the plant, $6 million. That's not mentioned, the financing is not mentioned in the D.E.I.S. It just says we want to do it. The other thing is the, the other place they've been financing, the community agreement with Anadaga County is costing, has cost us $4 million to date. So that incinerator is not what it's happily led to believe. It's not just the thing that eats up your waste. It costs you a lot of money and there are a lot of better ways to do something about it. So I urge you to take, our recommendation as Sierra Club would be to take, go for a five-year plan, which I've been told the Board won't accept. But if we push and say, I think we can do that, if we get a five-year plan and gradually reduce, because you can't just suddenly cut the thing down, but a five-year plan gives you time to develop jobs, industries, through recycled materials, and get all of those pollutants out of Jamesville. And believe me, it's true. Whoever mentioned the people in Jamesville, there are a number of friends and relatives and neighbors that I have that have cancer are incredible. And I got a note that says, from some of the people who are worried about the time used up for things, please Van Buren, we are not pushing a landfill. Okay? Thank you.
I'm 33 years old. I have two siblings, I have an older brother who's 36 years old, a younger sister who's 30 years old. We all have cancer and we all grew up in Jamesville, eating from our garden and whatever chickens, cows, and pigs my family raised for food. This past year in dealing with all the doctors, they all had same questions and thoughts. They all thought that we could not, that it could not be genetic because it affected all of us. My sister had some genetic testing done and it came back as inconclusive. They all asked if we were exposed to something, so I started thinking, what could it be? And the only thing I could come up with was the incinerator in Jamesville. After doing some light reading on the internet about the plant, I cannot sit and ignore the potential cancer creator we call an incinerator. When I talk to the people, when I talk to people about it, they say the same thing, but you can't really prove it, that that's the cause. With the lack of independent testing, I say to you, you cannot prove that it wasn't the cause. The Ash for Trash deal is a slippery slope. If we allow garbage to be brought in now, where does it stop? I cannot take the word of people that promised 20 or so years ago that it wouldn't get to this point, but here we are today. So I beg of our county legislators and OKRA board members, do not be lazy and take the easy way out. Instead, think of the future. It's already too late for me and my family, but it's not too late for my nieces and nephews and for all of you. Let's move forward with a goal of zero waste and make Anadaga County an industry leader in recycling. Thank you.
We have next Mark Berger followed by Dr. Robinson followed by Kristen Schuliar.
Hello, I'm Mark Berger. I'm the Director of the Soil and Water Conservation District in Anadaga County and I'm here on behalf of our Board of Directors. Want to let you know of the strong partnership that Covanta Energy has had with the Soil and Water District since 1997. 3,800 students have been put through an environmental education program because of their support of $85,000 over all those years. Our district board also wants you to know of the strong partnership that we have with award-winning OKRA and their award-winning programs. The district and OKRA work very hard to distribute tree seedlings to our residents and businesses in Anadaga County every spring, and we do that by providing the tree seedlings and compost to those folks to help reforest our communities, reduce our carbon footprint, and create wildlife habitat and make our place in the world better to live in. So on behalf of the Board of Directors of the Anadaga County Soil and Water Conservation District, we support the county Ash for Trash opportunity with Portland County. We see it as a great way to continue growing environmental education and outreach programs for residents and businesses in our community. Thank you.
Next, we have Dr. Robinson followed by Kristen Schuliar followed by Pam Jenkins. Chuck Schmidt.
I'm here, Kristen, but is the other person Dr. Robinson?
I might have misread the handwriting. Is there Chuck Mertz?
No, he's not going to speak.
Okay. Go ahead, hit me.
Hi, my name is Kristen Schuliar. I am a longtime resident of Jamesville. I grew up here in Jamesville and I worked in Connecticut, lived there for 10 years, just recently moved back. I'm a young professional in my 30s. I have serious concerns about that plant and the cancer impacts there. Very, very concerned about the health and the environment impacts, especially if we're going to expand our trash burning to import trash from Portland County and other counties. As other people said, this is a very slippery slope. This isn't, you know, other people mentioned it's not all about money. I also had a family member that died from cancer. Everyone also on my street, I had almost every single person on that street passed away from cancer. This isn't a joke. This isn't about money. This isn't about, oh, let's go dump, let's go send our trash to Jamesville, they'll deal with it. Oh, you know, somebody also said something about it's cleaner than burning in your fireplace. I don't believe that. The cancer rates, you heard that gentleman, young gentleman my age, who has cancer. So this is serious stuff. This isn't about money. This isn't about what kind of deals you guys are making. We need to do what's best for the Jamesville community. I also heard Van Buren people saying they don't want a trash site in their community, but let's ship it to Jamesville so we can get cancer. It doesn't add up. So, you know, we have to be really careful. As I said, I had a family member that died from cancer. I am frightened of cancer. When I hear a gentleman say that he had cancer, he was like 33, you know what I mean? Almost every single person I know in Jamesville is getting some kind of cancer. So all this about how, you know, it's so, it's so efficient, it's so much cleaner, it's not true. Cancer rates do not support that. I heard another business representative talking about cost savings. Will they use that cost savings to pay for our cancer treatments? It's an honest question, right? And this is, this was already stated, but I think we need to restate it again. You know, in, this is from the Anadaga County Community Health Assessment and Improvement Plan from 2014 to 2017. Each week, approximately 52 Anadaga County residents are diagnosed with cancer and approximately 19 residents died from cancer. Okay? So, and I'm not talking as just some stupid kid here. I am a working professional, doing well in my career, moving back here, and I have some serious concerns as anyone who's intelligent would have about this area, especially Jamesville. So I think we definitely need to find some alternative opportunities to burning our trash, slowly phase that out, and kind of come up with a cleaner, safer plan for all of us. So, thank you very much. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Pam Jenkins followed by Dick Clark followed by Allison King.
Good evening. My name is Pam Jenkins and I live in Portland County. A number of us in Portland County have been studying the Ash for Trash proposal for a year and a half. Agreement in principle to pursue the Ash for Trash project was signed between Anadaga County, OKRA, and Portland County. This agreement was signed before it was ever discussed in public and secretly negotiations with OKRA and Anadaga County continue to this day. This is beyond an abuse of the open government requirements. It's scandalous. Most of the 50 pages of my comments and questions have been electronically submitted to accompany this testimony. Last night, we had our D.E.I.S. public hearing in Portland. We have, we're a small county, 50,000 people. We have more cows than people in our county, but 70 people showed up, 20 people spoke. All of them were in opposition to Ash for Trash. Not one person spoke in favor of it. Next issue, there can absolutely be no excuse for not requiring complete health impact assessments per federal CDC protocols be done in each county. Your last one was what, I don't know, 30 years ago? Okay, you can't rely on information from 30 years ago. We've learned a lot in 30 years. We've learned extremely much about how dangerous those emissions are. The Portland County Health Department recommended that a health impact assessment be done for Portland County. This recommendation was ignored in the D.E.I.S. Current medical knowledge recognizes that incinerator emissions and incinerator ash contain disease-causing toxins. We want to know how many excess cancers and other diseases are expected to be caused by continued operation of the incinerator and the projected ash dump. The OKRA incinerator uses old technology, creates dioxins, acid, vaporized medicines, metals, and releases the most hazardous P.M. 2.5 and .5. No one in this room can deny that. OKRA does not control for P.M. 2.5 or 5. No one can say, in this room can say that they do. Those air emissions float around in every direction. They precipitate it out onto fields, into water, into people's gardens, and they fall on school yards too. The four-mile impact contains very many public schools. We pointed out in the scope and the final scope and the D.E.I.S. that they were each grossly lacking and they were not even compliant with secret law. Financial and budget details have been concealed. Secret law says these must be in the D.E.I.S. and they are absent. Secret law says that there must be a discussion of catastrophic consequences, but they're absent in the D.E.I.S. The D.E.I.S. failed to discuss that the closest D.E.C. critical environmental area is just downhill from the Portland landfill. This is McGraw's watershed. It's their public water supply. Several creeks that drain the landfill run right past McGraw's public water supply to join the Typhoon yoga and flow to the Chesapeake Bay. Most of our written and spoken questions and comments have not been addressed. They do not appear in the D.E.I.S. The information requested is absent. Open meeting law continues to be violated. Open meeting law continues to be violated by secret meetings and denials for the information, which is our right to access. Our FOIL requests are denied. The Committee on Open Government issued an advisory decision that did not agree with Cortland's withholding of the information that we requested, and I can forward that to any of you if you request it. There is no basis upon which we can see how your decisions are being made. We see that most of the DEIS is based upon glowing statements about how wonderful it'll be, how profitable it'll be, how safe it'll be, safe it'll be, but this is written by writers. It's not written by scientists. For a multitude of reasons, the only conclusion we can come to is that the Ash for Trash process should immediately be suspended. Van Buren citizens do not want a landfill in their community used for Onondaga ash. Well, guess what? We don't want it in the sole source aquifer recharge zone in our county. Up to 2 million tons, if you go for 95,000 tons for 20 years, 2 million tons of toxin-laden ash. Who's going to pay for the liability for that? It's absolutely insane that Cortland should be saddled with that. We are working very hard to be sure that OKRA does not have the option of using Cortland landfill for its ash. I have in my hand a copy of an email from Mike Conley in which he states that OKRA does not have plans or the desire to develop the permitted landfill at this time, because even without the partnership with Cortland County, there is sufficient landfill capacity in the state for reuse of the material as alternative daily cover. And I can submit this also. So we ask you, Onondaga residents and legislators, to be courageous and to join with legislators in Cortland County and Onondaga County to suspend the Ash for Trash project and support phasing out of the incinerator, as many communities around the country are doing. Can I keep talking a little bit more? Well, there's only one more person going to speak from Cortland County. Okay? Well, I would really like to say that when you improve your pollution control devices, it puts the pollution, more pollution into the pollution control devices, and even those are supposed to go into our landfill. Those are the things that become completely loaded with the metals, the dioxins, the furans, and that's completely absurd. From the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, from the U.S. Department of Health, they say the best way to prevent toxins, dioxins, is from not producing them. And it concurs that incinerator ash containing significant amounts of dioxin should be, basically, kept away from human exposure. Prevention of such a legacy to succeeding generations is a strong reason for prevention of incineration. That is from the CDC website. I can give it all to you. Make sure you have it in your hand. I submitted it electronically already. Okay. So, I guess one of the most important things I have to say is absolute demand that a health impact assessment is done per CDC guidelines, because if you do, you will find that you probably should not allow that incinerator to keep burning because of all the rates of diseases that are expected to be generated by it. So I thank you very much, and like I said, I submitted 50 pages of comments. I went through the DEIS page by page, and it's mostly glowing statements. So, ask scientists, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We have Dick Clark next followed by Allison King followed by Joe Esposito.
First of all, thank you for coming out and listening to everybody's viewpoint. That's the only way to get things done the right way. Just a couple of quick points. First of all, we, as Mayor of Onondaga, we're charged with trying to find ways to share services with other communities, with the two towns around us, and so the plan that Cortland and Onondaga County came up with follows that kind of path. It makes good sense. I don't live in Jamesville. I don't live in Cortland. So you have a real task in front of you to balance what looks like a pretty good financial plan for the safety of your residents and the other counties' residents. That's a handful, and I will encourage you to give it the utmost care and concern that whatever you come up with works for everybody. And my last point is I am here to support Claude Sykes and the town of Van Buren in their fight to keep landfill out of the town of Van Buren, the fight that they've been putting on for a couple decades, and just to know that the village supports that fight. Thank you again for your participation.
Allison King followed by Joe Esposito followed by Jennifer Peterson.
Good evening. As you heard, I'm Allison King, a health policy analyst, a toxicologist, and a small business owner. And I came up here tonight with a neighbor of mine who lives near the landfill in McGraw, so came up from Cortland County. And she and others for over a year now have been urging me to oppose this Ash for Trash deal. And I said, look, I'm a scientist. I have to wait and see the data. So I dutifully submitted my questions a year alone, our first scoping period, and I submitted my questions in June in our second scoping period, and came here and came to Cortland County to say these significant, very important questions weren't addressed. The DEIS is not adequate. Both county legislatures approved the DEIS as adequate. At this point, I oppose the Ash for Trash deal. I'm sorry, I no longer have confidence that these very serious questions will be addressed before this deal moves forward. We here in Cortland County, I read my paper, 80% of the contract negotiations are done. We are supposed to be getting data. This was driven by economics, and I appreciate that both legislatures were trying to figure out how to make those tax dollars go farther. I mean, I'm a businessperson. Yes, that's really important. So one of the critical parts of the DEIS is the economic analysis. In Cortland County, we want to know flow control alone. What will that bring us? $600,000 a year. That covers our debt. What's in the DEIS? It's flow control plus Ash for Trash, but it doesn't say it's flow control. It just says Ash for Trash with 35,000 tons of our trash. That's flow control. What does it bring us? $800,000. So all of this stuff is for $200,000 a year difference, and it doesn't account for $1.5 million to build a transfer station, road repair, these other ongoing costs. So for me, I do economic modeling. Our county didn't share the data, so I did the modeling myself. Their public data, our actuals, our budget actuals are public data. I trended them over time, trended them forward. For me, this was an emperor has no clothes on moment. Why are we talking about this? Why are we paying for a DEIS and an FEIS when we can solve our budget problems without your ash? We can finance our landfill, and our goal, our goal is to make that landfill last. The reason we have trouble right now is because we built two cells. We borrowed $9 million, and it cost us $15 million to pay them back, and we still got $11 million to go. We want to make that landfill last. How do we do that? The four Rs. And I credit you for the Great Recycling Program you've got here. Cortland County doesn't suddenly change our whole approach to trash by just shipping our trash north. We have to change how we manage our trash. We need to totally revamp. And when we look at what's happening elsewhere, we've heard about Covanta and its awards. Well, Covanta in New Jersey is an owner of some of the incinerators in Connecticut. The state of Connecticut announced it's shutting down its incinerators. Covanta's on record saying they want to work with the state of Connecticut. You can do that here. Covanta would partner. You make a decision to shut it down, move to the four Rs, and so people in Cortland County are worried about tipping fees going to go up, what's going to happen. So what we see, what we read in Connecticut, oh, for how long are tipping fees? Because trash is money. There's more money in recycling than there is in incineration. We heard from a young scientist that incineration is actually not producing energy, and burning trash uses three to four times more energy than recycling those same materials. So I've talked some about the economics. It just, this doesn't hold up from a Cortland County perspective. This doesn't hold up based on economics. The other major concern, I think that alone should kill a lot of people. The other major concern is the science, the health aspect. This is my field. This is sort of my life's work. It is a tremendous concern that we are creating some of the most hazardous chemicals known, these dioxins and furams. We know, you have to go from the DEIS to the Health Department's report, you can see that ash is tested in it, that ash has dioxin in it. What level? Oh, it's about the same level that's known to be above threshold for danger to, hey, follow your size. And for my neighbor who is a faller, she's going to be exposed to that. For the people in Jamesville, it's coming out of the stacks. Now there has an improvement. That's trapped, and that, those chemicals would then be coming to Cortland County. So one of the comments that I made in the scoping period is elsewhere in the world, they deep six this. They put these dioxins in Germany and Switzerland, it's buried in deep mines. So what happens in syrup juice? You take that fly ash and you mix it with the bottom ash so it's diluted enough that it has the standards and it can be landfill. Is that the best thing to do? Is that the right thing to do? We know dioxins are in the ash. We did ask in scoping for suitable tests of ash at other landfills and what the impact is in the surrounding area. We don't have a health impact assessment. What we've got is leachate analysis, but dioxin's fat soluble, not water soluble. So leachate analysis isn't going to help us understand what the threat is for dioxin. So, you know, that's an example of an issue that hasn't been addressed yet, but what we see when we look to our federal regulatory authorities is the best way to not bring dioxin into the environment is not to clean it in the first place. I want to shift a little bit here. So I've been speaking, these comments reflect a group of citizens in Cortland County, formed an Environmental Advisory Board, which is an independent citizens association with a range, people range of backgrounds to understand this. But actually, the first thing we did, you know, I'm kind of sick of nimbyism, not in my backyard. It doesn't, we're not helping our legislators if we just say this is bad and we don't have an alternative. So before we came up with our just say no statement, we worked on solutions. And I appreciate that, and I've been hearing tonight how folks here want to help Cortland County. So we have solutions, and we can improve our own solid waste management without bringing ash in and enabling you and supporting a decision to phase out your incinerator. The Environmental Advisory Board supports environmentally and fiscally responsible management of solid waste in our county. This solution statement is not only supported by the Citizens Association, it's supported by the League of Women Voters of Cortland County. The U.S. League of Women Voters has been working on solid waste issues since the 1980s, when actually the U.S. League opposed incineration. The U.S. League supports policies to reduce generation and promote the use in recycling of solid and hazardous waste. So just briefly, top line here on our solutions. One, maximize longevity of our current landfill, which is a financial investment and a county asset. Ash for Trash would close it sooner, and then what do we do? So four Rs to reduce landfill waste, avoid costly expansion. We do not have a hydrogeologically suitable area. The till is not deep enough for us to expand at that site. And as we all know, I want to avoid setting a new landfill. That just divides communities. So our second goal is to finance county solid waste services through integrated, sustainable methods. That's not Ash for Trash. We can pay off our daddy current costs through flow control and moving forward with the four Rs. Take the responsibility for the trash that we generate. Setting tipping fees to best serve our residents, and there is optimism there that tipping fees can actually go down with revenues from the four Rs. And developing that into a profitable operation. And then, lastly, utilizing our current landfill more efficiently. We hear in our county that some things are going into the landfill that shouldn't be. We don't fix that by shipping our trash north. We fix that by properly managing our current landfill. We can reduce amount that we're covering so we're not lining shale for cover, all kinds of things like that that we can do independently in the Onondaga County Bill. We appreciate your willingness to partner with us and your time this evening. Thank you.
Turn that back more to Joe Esposito followed by Jennifer Peterson followed by Brian. I've heard the handwriting, but maybe McInnany?
McInnany.
Great answer.
Hi, I'm Joe Esposito. A little mile and a half down the wing of the country. No one on my street has cancer. I'm not a scientist. But none of the no-sayers, none of them have an alternative. Except a lot of talk. On the OKRA website and with the New York DEC, there's the statistics that you can all read. One 50-gallon drum burning your backyard puts out as much toxins as that wind does in a year. Liberals lie to do the right thing, and they could never accomplish it. They only drive business out of New York State and manipulate children's minds. This is the only option we have in the world, to get rid of our trash out of the landfill. You talk about managing trash? You can't get people to put good things in their bodies. Cancer can come from what you got at Weymouth. This is the only sensible alternative for the world right now. And how we manage the ash is important, but what's more important is that you look at the facts. The toxicity out of that pipe, I'd go smell it. I'd go sit up there and read a book. It's bad cleaning. No, you go. This is Onondaga County. Take care of your own trash.
Take care of your own ass.
Folks, why don't we just, we allow the speaker to speak? Other people have the chance to speak.
There's no place on the face of the earth that there is a management plan better than turning that trash into energy to benefit Onondaga County and all our residents. They have no alternative. Nothing. You can't get everybody to go through every single bag of garbage, but that's what they have to do. You could give liberals everything you want, and they want in the whole world, and they still complain of it. And that's all I've heard is talk. And that's all it is, because the facts are the facts. And you're right on the New York State DEC website and the federal environmental websites, and you can look at them and read them and digest them, and they're the truth. And I trust the New York State DEC. It's about the most progressive state we have. It is wrong for people to stand up here, and I don't think that they understand the unconsequential, if we don't be, aren't able to get rid of our trash, we have to stick it in the ground, and that's the only alternative. Thank you.
Next, we have Jennifer Peterson followed by Brian. Followed by Tom Boe.
Good evening. I too am also a lifelong resident of Onondaga County, and I currently live in the Southwood area, which is roughly about two miles from the Pan Energy Plant. I have lived there at my home for over 15 years, and I represent the average American household in Onondaga County. Myself, my husband, and my four-year-old son, and my two-year-old daughter. We produce a typical amount of trash each week. I am also a business owner who runs a commercial janitorial service for Onondaga County businesses. So I see firsthand not only typical household, but I also see what the businesses produce in Onondaga County. I work with... I work with a main trash collector, and I also work with one of the main metal collectors, and I also work with Cabana Energy. I see firsthand just what everybody produces. It's a lot. It's a lot more than people realize. And I understand a lot of people have issues as far as environmentally, how it affects our community. As a Jamesville residence, I absolutely understand, because I'm concerned. But I know firsthand what goes on behind Cabana Energy. I see what they do. I see how they handle themselves, and I see what happens and how much trash is collected. I don't want it buried somewhere. I am open to many ideas and suggestions that have been brought to the room this evening, but I know that it's a lot. And I know it needs to be taken care of. And I know that people are doing things to try to help reduce and recycle, but it's not enough. We need to do more. And it's not just up to Cabana's responsibility to take care of it, it's all of our responsibilities to take care of. So just, I want to end with this, that again, I think somebody else have it stated, one barrel, or a fire pit, which is very common, produced, what is burned with trash or leaves or whatever is burned for, within the area of the fire pit, one burned barrel produces the same amount of emissions as Cabana does in one year, and that is a fact. I do care about the environment as a parent, homeowner, and a business owner. I have two children that rely on me to do that. So thank you.
We have Brian, Tom Bobia, and Mike Rigney. Great answer.
Thank you very much. Hi, my name's Brian McInnany, and I'm a professor at Honado County Community College, and I'm actually coordinator of the Environmental Tech Program there. We have the Environmental Tech Program at OCC actually utilizes all your waste facilities. Honado County is part of our training. We utilize Metro. We utilize the Rock Cut Road Facility Incinerator, and we also utilize your composting and recycling programs as part of our training. And we find them to be an excellent program. They're one of the best in New York State and a very good example of the United States. The recycling rate, which is about 65%, represents truly one of the highest recycling rates in New York State, and actually is one of the best in the nation in comparison to, except for, make California, which has mandatory recycling rates. I know everyone here has been talking about recycling. I don't think you guys realize just how exemplary, you know, Honado County is in terms of recycling and composting. And I know you guys want to push that and make that more, and God knows, I support that, but you guys don't realize just how much you guys do. And a lot of that is actually due to the funding through OKRA, probably due to the incinerator in part, that you guys reinvest in your community in terms of recycling and training children in terms of recycling. Okay? And maybe that's why everyone's conscious of it. But the actual programs that you have in Honado County are actually exemplary. They should be actually repeated in other counties. And expanding it in Portland County is truly a, you know, a beneficial type of use of what you already do here. As a citizen, I would just, you know, support what you guys have proposed. Okay? Thank you very much.
And sir, we have Mr. Bobia next, followed by Mr. Rigney, and then Don Hughes.
As a deputy chief of the Southwood Fire Department, I've chosen to come before the board to speak on behalf of Cabana, their safety record, and their community outreach programs. Cabana is within the fire protection boundary of the Southwood Fire Department, and I can tell you firsthand of their impeccable safety record. We need at least, at least semi-annually to review any changes to their internal protocols and our expectations as the first arriving due fire department. The Cabana management staff are always open to discuss their SOPs and how to work them in a multi-efficient manner. In the event of any emergency within the Cabana property, a shift supervisor or a desk knee will always meet us at the front of the plant, give us a quick briefing of what's going on, and lead us right to, you know, whatever, wherever the issue is. So there's always somebody there, you know, they have an outstanding safety director with us. I believe it's important to point out their safety record and procedures in the event of an emergency as it correlates with the overall compliance to the D E C. The other great thing about Cabana is that they're willing to support families, whether it's the Southwood Fire Department, the various schools, or the Boy Scouts. Cabana is generous with their support and always willing to entertain groups interested in learning more about their processes and providing tours. Cabana is a superior operator of the facility for the past 20 years. It has operated the facility since it was constructed in 1995. I see no reason not to support this proposal, especially considering Cabana is currently operating at a level far less than their permit allows. Thank you.
We have Mr. Rigney, followed by Mr. Hughes, followed by Michael Wilson.
Good evening, and thanks for attending your evening, my pleasure to speak to you. My name is Mike Rigney. I'm in Duane, and I've been resident on Knight County for the last 20 years, or two years. I want to kind of just reiterate a couple of points that have been made quite a bit already tonight. First off though, I want to say that I am opposed to incinerator, and I think it should be decommissioned in the coming years. There are alternatives out there. We can do better. There are, as one person indicated, there was a speaker recently who gave concrete examples of what we can do. I understand that's hard. The ash for trash is the easy solution. And you as county legislators really need to kind of dig down with feet and go for the not easy solution. So I urge you to look at other alternatives. Let's push our 65% recycle rate up to 75, 85, 95 or more percent. We should deal with our own trash, as any community should deal with their own trash, and we should do it in the most sustainable way that we can. I also would recommend a book called Sustainability by Design. I believe the author is John Anthony Phil, Ernold. It really talks about how to go from first principles and solve your solid waste or our solid waste issues. Again, I understand this is going to be hard, but I hope you take the road, the road less trap. Thank you.
Mr. Hughes next.
Followed by Michael Wilson. Thank you for enduring, for their patience and the opportunity to speak. I addressed you folks, some of you at the legislature meeting in the fall.
What's your name again?
It's Don Hughes. So first, I want to, I want to read the statement from Mark Donnelly, the executive director of OKRA regarding Site 31. OKRA does not have plans or desire to develop a permitted landfill at this time because even without a potential partnership with Portland County, there is sufficient landfill capacity in the state for reuse of the material, that being the ash, as an alternative daily So OKRA does not intend to develop Site 31. If they ever do, I'll come back and help you fight it. My word. I'm a professional engineer, environmental expert, PhD in environmental chemistry. This plan, this ash for trash deal, is a travesty. There is no justification. As Ms. King from Portland so eloquently pointed out, the economics are tenuous at best for Portland, and they are extremely poor for Honado County as well. Incineration is the most expensive way to get rid of trash. Can we recite some numbers here? Average tip fee for recycling? Well, the average tip fee for recycling is about zero, because you get paid. Composting can be $44 a ton, that's about what OKRA is spending. There's a local recycle composter who does it for about $5 a ton. Average tip fee for a landfill nationally, $61. You can landfill for about $35 here. Average tip fee for an incinerator, 92. If we follow through with this agreement, if the legislature allows Portland to ship this act, this act, trash here, and soon to be followed by other communities, I guarantee you, because we'll need to fill the capacity, we will be chaining ourselves to this thing for another 20 years, and we will be paying some of the highest tipping fees of anywhere in upstate New York. Don't do it. Just for that reason alone, cost. This is very expensive. We have far greater opportunities to reduce our costs by reducing our waste first, by increasing composting, by capturing more of the recyclables, by developing markets, specialty markets, such as Neil Seldman talked about, bringing in manufacturing, remanufactures who will take old mattresses, deconstruct them, and turn them into new ones, just an And they'll be happy to set up shop here. One issue I wanted to highlight that other people have not talked about, and a lot of discussion has held, but transport of ash, what we're looking at in terms of trucks on the road, 24 up to, well, the plan says 12 to 24 trucks per day would be traversing Interstate 81. So bringing trash down 40 miles and bringing ash up 40 miles. That's the increase in truck traffic, increase in fumes, increase in air pollution, and God forbid, there's an accident. And you know what that road is like during the winter. I used to commute to Portland, and there were many, many truck accidents. That in itself is a reason to give a pause. The E I S is flawed, highly flawed, because it doesn't look at the whole picture. "The Honado County Waste and Energy Facility has previously undergone a full environmental review prior to the permitting, construction, and operation of the facility." Oh yeah. "This lengthy process began with the issuance of a draft environmental impact statement in February 1981, when they were considering 1,400 tons per day." And it was then supplemented in 1988 for the construction and operation of the current facility. 1988 is a while back. The E I S goes on to say, "While the following topics were satisfactorily addressed in this prior process, it will not be reconsidered." Because we won't be processing more than the current permitted capacity. It goes through a whole laundry list of stuff, including traffic, land use, zoning, community services, health and safety, noise, economics, overs, energy. Well, I don't have to tell you, a few things have changed since 1988. It was when we were using floppy disks. So I urge you to reject the deal. Bottom line is we need to take a comprehensive look at solid waste. Step back, let's do a real solid waste management plan, a supplemental one, a real one, that really looks at all the issues. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our final speaker for the night is Michael Wilson.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Michael Wilson. I'm a physician, a medical doctor, a scientist. My training was here at Upstate, and following that, I finished a fellowship at Harvard in occupational environmental medicine, and that's been my primary practice for the last 20 years. Now, everyone's entitled to his or her opinions, but not every, everyone is not entitled to her, it's her own facts. And as Don just pointed out, the last review health risk assessment was done based on data that's almost 30 years old. That data is absolutely worthless at this point in time. As I pointed out, I'm going to supplement some of the comments I made in November and at multiple prior meetings that have gone on for the last 15 or 20 years, and add a few new things that I think that people should hear. This is a cancer factor. That's what this incinerator is. When the original health risk assessment was completed in early, in the early 90s, before I returned to Syracuse, which was where I was, where I grew up, in 1992, prior to that, the health risk assessment that was done, and it was paid for by the, I believe, the incinerator operator, if I'm not incorrect, that's what I recall. The health risk assessment determined that 9.9 people per million would die of cancer. That's excess cancers per, or, I'm sorry, not die, would develop cancer, excess cancers per million population. So we're not going to have five, in approximately five, per year. Extra cancers based on the emissions from the incinerator. I'm not certain, I'd have to go back to the 30-year-old document to see whether they even considered the other issues, which are the fact that your soil, for those of you who are downwind of the incinerator, is being contaminated, which means that according to EPA standards, at least a quarter, 25% of the carcinogens that are put up by the incinerator and found in the soil, and you can find the test results on the Honado County Health Department website, at least a quarter of those cancer-causing agents are in your house, in your household dust, where your children crawl around on the floor, where they engage in hand-to-mouth activity, putting their toys in their mouths. And as adults, you actually ingest about half the amount of dirt and dust in your house and around your house that the children do. So any of you who are downwind, any of you who are downwind in any direction from the incinerator, it's primarily the James Velaria or the 13078 zip code, you're all exposed to those cancer-causing agents that come from the incinerator. So what are they? Dioxins, that's the, considered to be the most toxic substance that's produced by human activity. Dibenzo pyranes, PCBs, and dioxin-like PCBs, arsenic, cadmium, lead, which is now considered a cancer-causing agent, which it wasn't at the time that the original health risk assessment was done. Cadmium, and there are others. So the bottom line is that it was expected that there would be almost 10 extra cancers per million in 1994 when the incinerator opened. Now, interestingly, if the D E C had numbers from this consultant that said there would be 10 extra cancers per million, and the old number that the EPA used to use for an acceptable risk was one extra cancer per million population, so that means one family, one person, one family would have to suffer through that. But the consultant said, no, there are going to be 9.9. It's a convenient number, because if it had been 10, the permit would not have been allowed. The D E C would have been required by law not to permit the incinerator. Now what we know now is that dioxins are at least 1,000 times more toxic than they were considered to be at the time of the original health risk assessment. And yet I've been submitting documents to the D E C, to the county health department, the state health department for over 15 years, all of which have been ignored, including the most recent ones, for the scoping period here, I've now received one response. And each time that the D E C has re-permitted this incinerator, it's ignored, as has the state health department. It has ignored the medical and scientific... It has ignored the medical and scientific information that I provided, indicating that at the very least, what's needed is a new health risk assessment. And the legislature must take the responsibility, the demand that a new health risk assessment be done. When this incinerator was originally proposed, the legislature at that time guaranteed, made an ironclad guarantee, that there would be no importation of trash from anywhere. When the DEC and the incinerator and OKRA tried to pull a fast one on us and wanted a temporary permit to burn tires about 15 years ago, five to 10 times as many people as in this meeting showed up in Jamesville, and 99 out of 100 of those people, including myself, spoke against it. Interestingly, they pulled the permit request a week later. Now, what it's going to take is for the populations of Portland and Anadag County to make it clear to this legislature and to the legislature in Portland County that this is an unacceptable means of getting rid of trash. You should know that none of these cancer-causing agents are present in trash that's being landfilled, with a few minor exceptions. If people throw a battery with lead in it into their trash and it gets missed, yeah, that would be in a landfill. But none of the things that, none of the cancer-causing agents that are found downwind of this incinerator, and you can look online, and you can find this, go to the library, use your own computer, you can find the levels, in multiple instances, they exceed what is the EPA acceptable level for these cancer-causing agents in soil. And of course, the county health department has declined now to test other things. They won't test water, they won't test food, they won't test vegetation. So they've basically cut back on the off-site monitoring program to where we only know soil levels. The soil levels alone are dangerous. The bottom line is that this incinerator takes in, and this is a lie that has been on TV, in ads, in my opinion, it's a straight-out lie. And if OKRA were governed by FCC regulations, they would be responsible for possibly civil and criminal penalties. There are ads on TV saying, "We're taking 325,000 tons of trash, and we're getting rid of it. We're taking it out of the waste stream." Well, even the head of OKRA admitted to me in a November meeting or October meeting, when the board limited our comments to a couple of minutes, to three minutes, admitted directly that at least 25% of what's burned in that incinerator comes out as ash. Now, that ash is not non-toxic, as the totally incorrect article in the post-standard states today. That is hazardous waste. Hazardous waste is defined by the federal government, by the EPA, even the EPA, which is colluded with, as far as I'm concerned, the DEC and the state health department, to basically cover this stuff up, because they knew about our comments. They knew about the medical risks, they knew about the lack of a modern health risk assessment beyond 1980s, and yet they've done nothing. Now, the EPA says that you can't landfill ash if it's hazardous waste. And what's the definition? Any ash that contains dioxins is hazardous waste. Any ash that contains any cancer-causing agent is hazardous waste. When what's called the TCLP, you don't need to know the details, but it's called the Toxic Characteristic Leaching Procedure, which is the sham test that's done on the ash to determine supposedly that it's not hazardous. When that ash is put in a column and waters run through it to determine what comes out the other end, the EPA says you have to test the 39 constituents. If any of the 39 exceed the EPA standard, it's hazardous waste. If you know that what's in that ash has a carcinogen in it, it's hazardous waste. So you got in your newspapers, I believe I received it, my newspaper recently, an OKRA publication that said, "We did a TCLP test, and we got cadmium and lead, and it's within the acceptable levels set by the EPA." Well, that's not possible, because cadmium and lead are carcinogens, and if you get a cancer-causing agent or carcinogen in your TCLP test, it's hazardous waste. Now, I'm not an attorney, but I've looked at the 337-page law that governs this, among others, the 2008, 2012 versions, and we've been landfilling hazardous waste in Seneca Meadows and wherever else they're dumping the ash now since the incinerator opened. Now, whether or not some agency has improperly given a pass to OKRA and the incinerator to dump this hazardous waste in an unregulated landfill is beyond my knowledge at this point. I will find out. The bottom line is, this ash is hazardous waste, and it shouldn't be dumped in Portland, it shouldn't be dumped in Seneca Meadows. We should shut this incinerator down. The DEC and the health department have been afraid to answer my questions, my medical and scientific criticisms, each time this has come up for a permit. The permit for this incinerator is supposed to be renewed every five years. Opened in 1994, should have been re-permitted in 99, 2004, 2009, and then this would be the fourth re-permitting. It's been re-permitted twice, because our comments, as far as I'm concerned, in my opinion, frighten them, and they couldn't answer them. So they just let the incinerator operate without an updated permit for four years on two different occasions. Bottom line is, I disagree with the previous, one of the previous speakers, and in my opinion, you can't trust the DEC, you can't trust the county health department, you can't trust the state health department. When we found that the county health department was, in my opinion, falsifying data from the off-site monitoring program, we confronted the health commissioner, the local head of the DEC, the New York State Albany head of the Toxics Bureau of the Department of Health, several other people from the DEC and the Department of Health in Albany, in the health commissioner's office in Syracuse. There were several people in this room who were at that meeting. When I told them that they had been sending improper information to the state department of health, that the testing for the first six years was improper, there were no answers. They basically stonewalled. They said nothing, they did nothing. They knew that they had been violating regulations, but they did nothing. The bottom line is that this has been a sham since the beginning. This facility is a cancer factory. We have data now that shows increased levels of breast cancer downwind from the incinerator. I would say that, in my opinion, without having even further documentation, it's highly likely that at least some of those increased cases of breast cancer are due to the incinerator emissions. Now, we're also talking about other types of cancers. Prostate cancer, possibly thyroid cancer, this clearly, if you go online, any of you who are interested in looking at Vietnam veterans in Agent Orange, it's a publication that comes out every two years from National Academy of Sciences. Even that document, which is extremely conservative, and is usually 10 or 15 years behind the medical literature, says multiple types of leukemias, lymphomas, soft tissue sarcomas, chloroacne, diabetes, and now thyroid disease. And I believe there's literature out there that shows that thyroid cancer is also one of the results of exposure. So we're talking about a cancer factory. This should be shut down if anybody had the guts to do a new health risk assessment, which was not done in the new draft environmental statement, was not done, and you're certainly carrying a line of data from 30 years ago. It would be a joke if it weren't so pathetic. The bottom line is, a new health risk assessment has to be done, has to be done by an independent group that has no relationship to the operators of the incinerator, to OKRA, or even to the legislature. Has to be an independent group that does a new health risk assessment. And I have the belief that if a new health risk assessment were done, this incinerator would have to be shut down as soon as those results were found. We would have to decommission the incinerator. There is no safe way to run this facility. And I suggest that you go on, you go and you look at this literature for yourself. You don't have to be a doctor, an MD, or a scientist to understand the dangers here. All right? You don't have to have a fellowship from Harvard, as I do, you don't have to have taught at Brown, Yale, and Upstate. You don't have to have done any of that. All you have to do is read the information for yourself and decide whether you want to have a cancer factory in our county that's endangering the health and the environment, public health and environment. So again, I thank you for the extra time.
One last speaker, Michael Nolan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Mike Nolan, the chief of the Water Star Department in the Water Star District. And I'm hearing everybody's talking about hazards that are out there for a lot of toxins and stuff like that. That's understandable, I don't know much about this at all, but I didn't come prepared to talk, but as they're hearing from going on, I think the hazards out there is meeting the fire chiefs and the deputy chief here, machines, and congratulations, they have a lot of problems out there. I, myself, in the Water Star District, am responsible for my people in the district out there, and people that pass through my district every day. Has anybody ever been out of OKRA or out to the Site 31? Have you been, I think, I rode before? Their road was written down a few years back, and recorded like S terms, 98 turns, it's terrible. Not much better now. You start getting traffic coming off of 690, running down Big Yard Road, you got left curves, little moles, hills, curbs, and I have people every day, hundreds of cars, going out of town, going in towards the city to work. I have Cisco Foods, they has tractor trailers, every day, back and forth. I have Ted Park, which is the whole city out there. They travel every day, back and forth on those roads. Now, we're going to add a few more vehicles, 12 to 25, I think you saw, maybe more on top of that. It creates a hazard for the fire department. I also have going through my district, the water service area is right there, right below that area. I also have the New Upstate Truway, which is right below that area. I also have a mulch company right there, that's in the same area as that. In the summertime, they're hauling dirt and stuff out of there. That's a disaster. They come out with their tractor, their trucks, they pull out there, it's a big dust mop, mud and dirt and stuff like that. My concern, and although it's probably toxins and stuff that people in the area have, they got a lot of houses in that area, right directly there, but there's huts all around there. And I get people traveling every day, back and forth, and when the wintertime hits, it's like a busy city out there. We're a small department, not a lot of members, like most departments will have nowadays. We have to do what we can happen. What's it going to cost if something goes in out there? It's going to cost some taxpayers, and Mike Nolan, the chief of the fire department, needs more equipment, specialized equipment, to be able to protect those people that work out there. And I have no idea what's going to be up there, first of all, I don't have time to put you have up there. But all I know is if you get tractor trailers coming out here, you all have diesel fuel on it, a gallon a piece on that. Your cars coming down in the middle of winter, they pass each other, it's going to be a big disaster. We certainly do not need that there. And now we have probably a lot of transportation there, and out of Cisco and Ted Park area. Adding a few more trucks is going to make it even worse. And that doesn't count all the cocaine trucks, the oil trucks that go over there, deliver stuff to the health system. That's all I had to say tonight, I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight, for your comments. We greatly appreciate all your comments and your time. We thank everyone for being here tonight, and the discussion will certainly continue over the weeks and months ahead. Thank you, folks. At this time, I call a public hearing to closure.